Good evening and welcome to the Sioux Falls School Board Candidate Forum hosted by the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce along with the League of Women Voters of Sioux Falls. My name is Jeff Griffin. I'm the President of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. We have at the Chamber of Commerce a very special interest in our schools, not only for a quality of life standpoint, for attracting and retaining businesses, but from a workforce development standpoint, so that we know that our children are well cared for, well educated, and ready to move on into the workforce, into higher education upon graduation from high school. And we believe hosting forums such as these help educate the community and the voters to the platforms the candidates have to offer. And I offer special congratulations and thank you to those of you courageous enough and strong enough to put your name on the ballot to serve our community. These are thankless opportunities sometimes for school board and city council and so forth, and it takes all of us to make our community great. So I admire and thank you for your efforts to do that and sacrifice. Tonight's forum is being held at the Instruction Planning Center, also broadcast live on Midco Cable 20 and 595. It will be rebroadcast live several times until Election Day, also being livestreamed and recorded on the school district's YouTube channel. For those of you in the room, there are note cards in the back of the room for questions you may want to submit. And a reminder of Election Day, held on Tuesday, May 18th. Registered voters may cast their vote either in person on Election Day or via absentee voting. For information on how to cast your vote in this important election, please visit the Sioux Falls School District website, www.sf.k12.sd.us. All right. www.sf.k12.sd.us. You need a good education just to know the website. Intro of moderator, that was not to be read, but I read it anyways. Betty Oldenkamp, who is our President and CEO of Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota, a very strong leader in our community, gives a lot of time to the community, friend of the Chamber of Commerce, representing the League of Women Voters. Betty, the show is yours.
Well, thank you very much, Jeff. As Jeff said, I am Betty Oldenkamp, and I'm delighted to be here this evening to moderate this candidate's forum. Before we move in to the format for tonight, I do just want to speak a little bit about the wearing of masks. We know that some are choosing to wear and some are choosing to not. And what I will do, because it's difficult, I think, for you to hear, I am going to keep my mask off while I am moderating. If you are wearing a mask and opt to take it down while you're speaking, that's fine, and then you can put it back up. And I know we've got members of the audience masked and unmasked as well. We do just ask to practice that social distancing. So with that, we are really honored to have five candidates that are vying for our two open seats on the school board. And with us tonight are Cory Begley, Paulette Ludens, Mark Murren, Kate Parker, and Anthony Peiser. And these are candidates for the 2021 school board election. Just a reminder that we are requesting from the audience to get your questions on note cards and get them submitted, and they'll pass those on up to me so that we can work through those questions from the audience members. And just a reminder for everyone, I did this right before I came up, please turn your cellphone off or to vibrate. And if you are compelled to have a conversation, we do ask that you take it outside of this room so you're not disrupting the business that's at hand. So our format for this evening is that each candidate will have two minutes to offer an introduction, and after the introductions, we will transition to our question and answer portion of the event. During that time, we will ask each candidate to respond to each of the questions. They'll have 90 seconds for their response. There will be no rebuttal time. At the end of the forum tonight, there will be two minutes for closing comments, and you can use those minutes to maybe respond to something that has already been asked earlier, or to bring up a new topic, or just to use that time and however you choose for your closing comments. So what we will do with the introductory comments is when we start those, we're going to go alphabetical by last name, which is also the order you're sitting in. And so we will start with Cory. When we move on to the questions, we're going to kind of keep that format. So the first question will go to Paulette, and then we'll rotate through. When it comes time for closing comments, we're going to reverse the order, so Anthony would go first when we get to closing comments. All right. Well, with that, we are ready to begin. I do want to point out that we do have a timer. We'll give you a warning, and I'll try to remember to watch as well. But with that, we will start with our opening comments, and Cory, you are up.
Excellent, thank you. I first want to say it's great seeing everybody here. I didn't know what to expect, so this is awesome, seeing everybody taking the time out to get to know each and every one of us. I'll keep this short just because I want to get to your guys' questions. I think that's probably the most important part. But I'm Cory Begley, married to my wife Rhonda. We've got three kids at home with us, so a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and a soon-to-be kindergartner. So I just look forward to your guys' questions and be able to provide my thoughts and feedback on that. So again, thank you for coming.
All right, Paulette?
I'm Paulette Ludens. I retired last year from Homestead Senior Care. I ran that company. And I decided to drive school bus again, which I started many, many years ago while my children were growing up. And I'm back to that, and I'm lifeguarding at Midco Aquatic Center for the city. I have six children, they're all adult, I have 20 grandchildren, and I was also a foster parent for 20 years here. So I've dealt with the schools a lot, and right now I've got grandchildren in college. And in fact, one of them even was a substitute teacher here this year over Christmas break.
Wonderful. Mark?
My name is Mark Murren, and I've been a teacher and a coach in Sioux Falls for 42 years, well, 32 in Sioux Falls, but 42 total. I feel that my voice would be advantageous to the school. I think I have some valuable things that I've done and worked with kids, and I know how it is to be a teacher in a classroom and deal with the issues. So I'm excited about that. I believe in the power of education can change lives. I believe who serves on the board is very important to the whole community. Well-educated students can make changes, they can make things happen. Well-educated students can impact the community, and they can have a capacity to reduce crime, they can create more skilled workforce for our town, and in general, improve the quality of our community. So that's why I ran, and that's where I'm at. Thank you.
All right, Kate?
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum tonight, and for all of you that are here listening to us and asking your questions, and those at home too that are watching. My name is Kate Parker, and I have been on the Sioux Falls School Board for 12 years now. I've got two boys in the Sioux Falls School District. One is a sophomore at Lincoln, and one is a seventh grader at Edison in the Spanish Immersion It really has been my privilege to serve the school district for the last 12 years. I've dedicated my time in ensuring that all of our kids receive the very best education, one that is enriching and academically challenging, and in safe and secure environments. I have dedicated my time to ensuring that teachers and staff feel supported and have the resources they need so they can nurture and educate all of our kids. I have dedicated my time to listening, listening to our students, listening to our staff, and listening to our community. In my 12 years on the board, I have seen budget cuts, enrollment growth, consolidations, new buildings, new programs, curriculum changes, schedule changes, boundary changes, and a pandemic. I have also helped hire two superintendents and a Southeast Tech college president. Through all of this, I've been steadfast in my support of the quality education we offer our kids. After navigating the insurgency due to the pandemic this past year, I think we can begin to look to the future, and we have a lot to look forward to. Dr. Stavum has said that the Sioux Falls School District could be the best in the nation, and I believe her. And I believe I have the knowledge and experience to help guide our district in becoming the best in the nation. Thank you.
All right, Anthony?
Well, my name is Anthony Peiser, and I'd like to say thank you also to the Chamber and to the League of Women Voters and all of you for joining us tonight. My public school, I'm running for school board because my public school education was incredibly impactful on my life, and I want to make sure that the students in our school district have the same opportunities that I did. Professionally, I'm a financial advisor for Thriving Financial. I have two children in the district. I have a five-year-old James and a, or excuse me, an eight-year-old James and a five-year-old Elise. He'd be very mad that I messed that up. In addition to volunteering in their classroom, I also serve as the Chair of the Board for the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation, and I'm happy to say that over the last three years that I've been on the board, we've been able to raise, our team has been able to raise over $900,000 to help impact students and teachers within the district. I also serve as an LSS school-based mentor, and I've done that for 10 years with, I'm proud to say, with the same student. He was a first grader when we first started together, and he'll be a senior next year. And he's also planning to go to college where he's going to study computer science. So I'm very proud of him. Three areas that I think the school district should focus on in the years to come are workforce development, student equity, and community engagement. By workforce development, I not only mean preparing students for the opportunities of tomorrow, but also creating opportunities for the teachers and staff, which include professional development and career advancement. By student equity, I mean pushing all schools forward, but also keeping the gap between our best school and our worst school as close as possible. Lastly, community engagement. I believe creating opportunities to bring parents, caregivers, and community organizations into the school district, because we all benefit when we invest in the next generation. Thank you, and I look forward to answering your questions tonight.
Great. Well, we will move on and start with our questions then, and again, we will begin the questions with Paulette. First one for everyone is what is or was the motivation for your running for school board?
Oh, well, my motivation was, like I said, I retired last year and really thought about how I could give back to the community. And so January, February, I started, I went out to peer twice with two different groups of people. I moved to a new neighborhood, so I wanted to meet my legislators and who is in my district. I wanted to get informed on what was available for me to step into here in the community. And the one that I felt I was more suited for was the school board election. So I threw my hat in the ring, and with my experience with all the children I've taken care of over the years, I think I am a great fit for that job.
Thank you, Paulette. Mark, same question?
I love the Sioux Falls School District. I love the town of Sioux Falls. I think they do a great job. I think we can do a little bit better. Some areas I'd like to concentrate on, and we'll get, I'm sure we'll get into that later, but I think it's important that people are allowed to reach their highest potential in academic achievement. And then I think it's important, as a former average educator, as I said before, my voice would be a valuable addition to the board. I believe that children are the most important thing in our community. I have a passion for kids, and that's why I'm running for the school board.
Thank you, Mark. All right, Kate?
I think I still have a lot to offer the school district after 12 years with both my knowledge and my experience. I've learned a lot in the 12 years that I've been on the board. When I first ran, my oldest wasn't even in kindergarten, and now he's a sophomore in high school. So as my kids have gone through the school district, I've also grown with them in my knowledge and understanding, not just as a board member, but as a parent and community member too. So it's that passion that I have for educating all of our kids and just knowing that I still have, I think I still have something to offer the school board, so that's why I'm running again.
All right, thank you, Kate. Anthony?
Thank you. Well, as I mentioned earlier, my public school education was incredibly impactful. Well, as I mentioned earlier, my, my public school education was incredibly impactful. At my, at the age of seven, my parents divorced and created a lot of instability in my, in my home life. And so my school became my place of consistency. And not only did I get an education, but I also received the affirmation, the confidence, and the inspiration for my future. And so when I think back to my experience in public school, I see, I can draw on so many examples of, of what led me to success in adulthood. And so I want to have, make sure that all the kids in our district have the same opportunities that I did because I, I see a fair amount of students whose situation is much like mine growing up. And so that was really my inspiration for running.
Thank you. All right, Cory?
Serving my community's always been a big part of my life. And for the past 22 years, I've served our community, our state, and our nation and as an active Army member. And so right now, I'm actually in the process of retiring. So I was thinking about what's my next step in life to be able to serve the community. And so the school board was a thought, and so talked it over with my wife and stuff, and we decided that I had run for it. But I guess my biggest motivation for that would be my wife Rhonda, who's a teacher in the district, and Bella Braxton and Brenly, and all their peers and stuff inside our school district. So the school's where we build our future leaders. And so I'd like to be a part of helping continue to build our leaders to move us forward in our community.
All right, thank you, Cory. Before we move to the next question, I'm just going to remind everyone that we could still use a few more questions submitted to fill our time this evening. So our next question, and this one will begin with Mark, is what is your background in education?
Well, it's pretty easy. My background in education, I've been an educator off and on for 42 years. Worked in four different high schools. I've been on everything from coaching to committees, work with curriculum. I've been allowed to work with some of the greatest people, and that's teachers. And it's been a wonderful experience. I, my background is, that's what I did my whole life as a working person. I got to, I got, I had the best job in the world. I loved to go to work on Mondays, and I, I'm passionate about it. And that's my experience, 42 years in the classroom. I taught summer school for, I think, 28 or 29, and that was fun, too.
Thank you. Kate?
Yes, well, other than the 12 years I've spent on the school district, on the school board, I actually have a bachelor's degree in education. Started my college career as a, planning on teaching, actually. And about two years into my program, decided that teachers are a very special type of person and had a level of patience that I did not have. So decided that teaching was not my forte, thankfully, for all of our students in our school district. But I still loved, I loved education, and I loved educational policy. And finished my degree and ended up working in child advocacy nonprofit organizations in DC for about six, seven years prior to moving here. So a lot of experience in education and obviously my time on the school, school board as well.
Thank you, Kate. Anthony?
Well, I, my personal background in education is I have a bachelor's degree from Luther College. But the majority of my relevant educational experience for this role comes as a volunteer. I mentioned that I'm the Chair of the Board for the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation. I also serve as a mentor, which I mentioned. I also work as a junior achievement classroom volunteer. And I spend, for each of my children, I spend a half a day per week in their classroom at their school. And so, so I'm, I'm pretty integrated into the, the school system, both through my own children as well as through my, my volunteer experience through the organizations that I mentioned.
Thank you. All right, Cory?
I guess my personal side, I've got my master's degree in human science. My area of concentration is family and community service. For a year, I substituted inside the Sioux Falls School District. We had moved to four 10s on the military side, so I took Mondays. And when my kids got into school, I had nothing to do on Mondays. So I substituted for a year there, and then I had the opportunity to become an educator in the Human Development and Family Service Program from South Dakota State. So I teach night school in the program here in Sioux Falls. So I get to see the kids after they get through the school district and how well they have adapted at the college level. So that's, I guess, my experience as an educator.
Thank you, Cory. Paulette?
My background in education is I got my GED, and I started raising children. I had five children at the age of 24. So my background, I started young in the school systems with my children in school. I got on all the boards that were available at the Catholic schools when they were there. I've been a mentor for the teen girls up at Roosevelt High School. I've been a mentor, I've been a counselor at BOA Pregnancy Center in town here for the pregnant teens. I was also on the school board in town here for Christian Center Elementary. And being a foster parent all those years, I took care of all those children in the school. I helped in the school, I worked in the school, and I got those kids to also graduate from the schools in Sioux Falls. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paulette. All right, so we will move on to our next question. For those of you who have raised foster children or children other than your own, how do you feel this helps prepare you for the school board? And we'll start this round with Kate.
I guess my answer will be pretty short in the sense that I've only raised my own two children. Thank you.
I also have raised my own two children. But I will say that I, in my mentor relationship, starting in, in first grade and now being in, in his junior year, that's given me an incredible insight into, one, the school district, because we've been together through elementary, middle, and high school. But also, it's, it's been transformative for both he and I in, in our learning from each other. So that, that's been my outside experience.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, Cory?
Yes, first I got to say God bless those who do raise foster children and stuff because my three keep me busy enough that I don't think I could handle that. But, so I don't have any experience outside of that, outside of, I guess, coaching my daughter's softball team and being with them for, since they've been five-year-olds, and now they're up into the 12-under thing. So seeing those girls year in and year out and being a part of their life and getting now to experience some of their joys of middle school compared to elementary has been amazing.
Thank you, Cory. Paulette?
And I just spoke of this. I did, I was a foster parent for 20 years, and I raised many children in my home along with all my boys. I have five sons and a daughter, and they helped. And it was good incorporating that into just different values and school and work ethics and teaching them how to drive a car, how to do everything. I also helped raise my two granddaughters. My daughter passed away at age 28 of breast cancer, and she left behind a 10-month-old and a two-year-old little girl. So I helped my son-in-law get them, and I am a proud grandma of two girls who graduated from Roosevelt High School. One is in college at Mount Marty, and the other one is in college in Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you, Paulette. Mark?
Well, sometimes I felt like a dad, but for 39 years, I coached wrestling. And that's, you know, it was a great experience. And obviously, I got to work with a lot of different kids. I coached football for 42, and I coached track for 18. I took kids to Washington DC on trips, supervised them. And I was proud that I could be not their friend, but friendly. I was proud to be called coach, and I was, I was proud of the things that I did with kids. I was very fortunate that it's a relationship that's really special when you're a coach because, especially in wrestling, you get to know the family so well and the kids so well. And you almost become a counselor, and you listen to stories, and they tell you things they might not tell their folks. And it was just a great experience. And one thing about kids, if they know you like them, if they know you care about them, they'll run through a wall for you. They'll do the best they can do. And that's the greatest thing I liked about being a coach and a teacher. It was good to mentor, and it was fun.
Thank you, Mark. All right, we will move to our next question. This one will start with Anthony, and the question is, how would you improve transparency?
I believe that transparency is a key ingredient in any public tax-funded institution, which the public schools certainly are. And so transparency is, is vital. One of the ways that I would recommend that, or one way that I've seen transparency could be improved is through the pandemic. And a situation, I think largely the pandemic has been handled positively. If I were to go back and change something, I would say that providing information to the parents about what's going on in the schools, the number of cases, things like that, would be very helpful or would have been very helpful. I found myself asking my son, who's eight, you know, what was going on in his classroom and what was going on in his school, and, and that was my best source of information. And so, so one way that I would improve transparency with the pandemic in mind is sharing information about the, the risk and the spread within the schools.
Thank you, Anthony. Cory?
Just like Anthony said, I do believe that transparency is also very key. It's critical that our parents and our community knows what's going on inside our school. And so one way that I, I would do that if having the honor of being elected would just keep staying engaged with the public and with the parents and helping them get more involved with the district and know how to ask the questions and understanding what's going on out and about that way. So I think just keeping them engaged, getting out there, talking with them, letting them know. So that way, they know where you're setting at. So when you do make a decision, they understand already why you made that decision and the reason why you decided to go that route for the betterment of the community as a whole. So I think community engagement and transparency are kind of hand in hand.
Thank you. Paulette?
Well, to improve transparency, I see right away just me mentioning where I'm at, at the bus garage, at the aquatic center in my daily life. They're throwing questions at me already just because I said I was running. So to improve that transparency, just try to, like, like these guys said, get involved with, come to these meetings, find out when the board meetings are, go to the classroom, talk with the teachers, especially go to your child's conferences and find out what's going on. Look through their books, look at their homework, do those things. And I've got, of course, little things like I wanted to do a little program to get parents involved, the PICK program, you know, parent involvement campaign, and try to get them helping even on a, on a bus, which is in desperate need of help also. And there needs to be more transparency even there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I worked in four school districts. This is the most transparent district that I've been around. The budget process, community involvement, parents, educators, the boundaries. And I know Cory served on those, and he can probably hopefully relate to it the same way I did. I thought it was outstanding. People were invited. It was a nine-month process. It was wide open, very transparent. Curriculum, community members and parents and educators get together and they work on our curriculum in this district. Now, what could we do to improve it? Well, I had an idea, and I would like to maybe take a board meeting to a different part of town sometime. I don't know if it's going to increase the turnout. But I think it would be nice to try to go to where they are sometimes. Maybe we could get them out of their neighborhood and come and visit with us for the evening or at least come to the meeting. But overall, I think Sioux Falls Public Schools has done one heck of a job with transparency. I'm really proud of it.
Thank you, Mark. Kate?
Well, first of all, thanks, Mark. Appreciate that comment. I too believe that we have been very transparent over the years. It's something that we really focused on as a board and a school district, starting with our last strategic plan. You know, and, and a lot of that had to do with Cory, what you mentioned, community engagement. It's making sure that we have the public involved in our meetings and the public involved in our committees, our task forces, making sure that we, we are holding meetings throughout the school district. You know, when we had our, our bond meetings, we were all over. We were at our middle schools, we were at our high schools, just making sure that we were getting feedback from as many people as we possibly could. Obviously, it was a little difficult with the pandemic this last year, but even holding some Zoom meetings when necessary. So I do believe community engagement is key with transparency. And I believe we just need to continue to do what we're doing and find little improvements as we move along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. All right.
I can real quick, I just want to make sure that Anthony also is on the Boundary Task Force with me, so. I just wanted me to just get it out there for him.
All right. We are going to move on to our next question, and this one will start with you, Cory. Support attendance is a serious issue for many students, and this negatively impacts their achievement. How would you propose to address this issue?
So some of it, I think we need to look at some of our transportation getting to school. I think the first step is always getting the kids the option of how to get to school. And so if we can get, provide that transportation to get them to school, we're going to see the attendance rate up. So being able to sit down and work with School Bus Inc. and look at how they've got their bus routes and all that stuff. Part of my job in the military was logistical routes and figuring that out and working that route, one, to obviously to combat the enemy of how they're going to fight us on there, but just coming up with the most efficient and effective way for logistical routes. And I think I could bring in that knowledge and piece and work with School Bus Inc. just to see if we can potentially increase or I guess decrease our walk zones and add more busing routes for the children out in the community so we can get more kids the ability to bus. And I think if we offer that busing to them and the transportation, they're, instead of walking and stuff where, you know, maybe they'll see a gas station and decide to stop there and skip school, that we can get them to school. So I think that's one of the areas is first, we have to get them the option to get to school, so.
Thank you. Paulette?
Attendance. I had a lot of foster kids because they were totally truant all the time, and they would go into the foster care system. So I dealt with that a lot over the years with these kids. Sometimes they even called the school or the police department to come get them out of their bed and take them to school. Those options, you know, they, they don't want to be there, they don't want to learn. So I did struggle with that. But for attendance now, the, the ones I did have success with was being a part of their school day, going to all their sports, getting them involved in school. It again is the parents and the family members really encouraging them to go or finding that favorite teacher, which was usually the one who could just convince them also. And then with the help of me, the parent, it worked for me.
Thank you, Paulette. Mark?
You know, if kids aren't in school, they can't learn. And this attendance thing is a big issue, and it's gotten worse. In my career, it just seemed to get gradually worse. I, I don't have all the options. I wish we could look at some things, and I think a couple of things we can do. The older kids, we can ask them, especially the high school kids, what, what can we do to help you? What do you need? Maybe we can do something with that. At Washington High years ago, we had a situation where we had flexible attendance. Kids could come at 10 o'clock in the morning and go home at 5:00. It really didn't cost the district anything because we talked some teachers into coming in at 10 o'clock and leaving at 5:00. So the kids actually put in the same amount of time, and the teachers put in the same amount of time. And that's something I think we could look at, especially for high school kids. Some of those kids, you know, I had, I had a student of mine that worked at John Morrell's full-time. And he was tired when he got to school. He went every day and worked at John Morrell and got a degree and graduated. A lot of times, they don't have family support. A lot of times, it's taking care of their siblings and getting them to school. But there's got to be some things that we could do on that level. The elementary kids, you know, I, I think we need to get together. I think we need to figure something out. I think maybe we can send people to their house on a random visit to ask them to come in. Maybe get some social workers. But it's, it's a tough issue that we need to address, and I'm all for doing what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Kate?
Yeah, so, you know, attendance was one of our strategic planned priorities over the last five years. And we did try to implement some things that ultimately... And we did try to implement some things that ultimately didn't get, give us the return on investment like we had hoped. So I know that that will continue to be a priority for us as we, as we do look at our district priorities in the next year or so. You know, one of the things I think about when I think about attendance is how do we engage students? You know, we always talk about multiple pathways in the school district. And I'm actually really very passionate about all the offerings that we have for our students, everything from Spanish immersion to New Tech High to CTE. I mean, we, we really provide a lot of different opportunities and programs for our kids to become engaged so they want to go to school. I have a very good friend that her, her son started in the culinary program at CTE and he loves it and he goes to school every day because he knows that he gets to go to that class. So I think that if we continue to, to develop these programs and opportunities for our students, we will engage them and they will want to come to school.
Thank you, Kate. Anthony?
Well, the attendance issue is something that we've had actually some, some great success with on the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation. Two of our three pillars include the Student Success Fund, which addresses basic needs within the district, and then also our, our Public School Proud Grants that address innovation in the classroom. And so with those two pillars, what we've been able to do is, is raise money through shared well-giving and philanthropy to help us on the, on the basic need side. Like Mark said, you know, it's a, it's a, it can play out to be an equity thing where you have some families in the district that, you know, have all the resources and parents work, you know, eight to five jobs and they get their kids up and get them to school. You also have other parents and families that are involved in shift work. They're leaving the house at four in the morning and it's up to one of the siblings to get their siblings up to, up into school. One of the things that we were, that we were able to do is actually just buy alarm clocks. And that turned out to be fairly wildly successful because what they're running into is they just won't wake you up in time. And so by the time they would wake up late, they would just not make it to school. On the flip side, like Kate said, finding, meeting students where they're at and finding their engagement, we had a really amazing grant for VR headsets in a German class in high school. And there was a child who, who actually was coming to school because he wanted the VR headset experience in his, in his German class.
Thank you, Anthony. All right. Cory? No, we're done. Double check my list. All right. We will move on to the next question. And I do thank everyone for the questions they are submitting. We are getting a little bit of overlap in some of our questions, so I will be combining a few just to make sure we cover all the topics. So a couple of questions related to this. Do you support students organizing and carrying a walkout protest during school time? And we start this one with Paulette.
No, I do not support that at all. I know they have some organizations pray around the flag. That's not during school time. They do that prior to school. They meet at school outside around the flag pole and pray. In school, if they have their little clubs or groups, that's one thing. But to protest something either regardless of what it is, really political or whatever, and to leave the school during school hours while they're supposed to be in class, I do not think that at all is good, that they should walk out of the school should something happen, should they leave, should they? That's one reason. And the other reason is the teacher is in charge of the classroom and they are to respect and learn to respect that person they're in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Paulette. Mark?
Well, in my 42 years of being in the business, kids need voices. Sometimes they're hurting, sometimes need a voice. Would I advocate that they leave the school and protest? No. Are we going to stand in the doorway and get run over? I mean, if they're, you know, there's 400 kids and they want to leave, obviously they can leave, we can deal with it when they get back. But if you give them a voice, if you give them an opportunity, if you give them a chance, you can avoid a lot of those things. It'll never, we won't end it because kids get emotionally wound up. And I, I wish they wouldn't, but I'm going to tell you, it's going to happen again and we have to deal with it. We have to give kids a voice. Okay? It's not, a 15-year-old likes to be heard. An 18-year-old likes to be heard. And sometimes you got to listen. Sometimes you got to try and shape the narrative. Sometimes it doesn't happen. So I, yeah, I don't endorse it. I would never want it to happen, but it's going to happen. And you're not going to stand in the doorway with four or 500 kids sad they're gone. Okay? You want to try to do it as safely as possible, you want to try to dissuade them, but it's going to happen. And kids need a voice and I really believe that.
Thank you, Mark. Kate?
Well, I, I, I support a student's expression of freedom of expression and that's been held up in Supreme Court, Tinker versus Des Moines. I took an administrative law class in grad school and it was the most boring class I ever took, but I learned a lot about Tinker versus Des Moines. It's also protected in state statute. So if students want to peacefully organize and express their opinions and their voices, I don't have a problem with that as long as it doesn't disrupt other students who are there to, to learn. I think this gives students an opportunity to learn from that experience as well and to, to voice their feelings and their, their beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Anthony?
Well, I support freedom of expression and freedom of speech. I think if people are, if students are choosing to protest and walk out, there's probably been a lot of opportunities to engage those students that have been missed along the way. So I would see the protest or the walkout as a symptom of a larger issue. And much like Mark said, if, if you're not talking to the students or giving students a seat at the table, there's likely going to be an escalation until they feel like they're heard. And so my approach to that situation would be to bring students into the conversation early so that it doesn't escalate to a point where they're walking out in protest.
Thank you. All right. Cory?
We are a country founded on freedom and in this state, we've heard, you know, that we have our freedom of choice, which is a great thing in my opinion. But with that comes great responsibility and we have to be prepared for the consequences of the choices we make. So the students that are walking out, they've got to prepare themselves then for the consequences that they cause by these walkouts. So I support them in their choice and their ability to talk and speak up, but at the end of the day, they are kids and they need to respect the adults that they're, and they also need to respect their peers that are there that want to be there to learn. So the consequences that come with that, they've got to be willing to take those if they're going to step up and want to play adult games, you got adult consequences that come after that. And if you're messing with other kids' education, something needs to be done. So we need to have the backbone inside the schools there to let them know what their actions caused. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cory. I've gotten several questions relative to curriculum. And so, I'm trying to decide if I roll them all into one. I don't think so. I think we're just going to spend a little time on curriculum. So I'm going to start with, well, a tough one, I think. Discuss your stance on critical race theory training and teaching in the district.
Here's my stance on critical race teaching in the district. I believe that we should adhere to the curriculum system that we have. We have state standards. Our critical, the Sioux Falls School District is developed by educators, administrators, community, and we teach that curriculum. Now, the curriculum that we currently teach is not about hating America. Okay? I believe that we need to teach kids how to think, not what to think. Because if you teach them how to think, it can apply to everything and they can, they can weigh the good and the bad things that happen. I'm not the guy that's going to endorse it or I'm not the guy that's, whatever. I mean, we have the people in the community. We have our teachers, we have our administrators, we can come up with a curriculum. The one we have now is good. I used it, I taught it, it's reviewed, updated, changed. But it's based on the state standards and it's based on what we in Sioux Falls, in our Sioux Falls district believes is an appropriate curriculum. I'm all for it. So that's where I'm at on that. I want to stay where we're at. I want to stay with the system that we use and that's where I want to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Kate?
I'll just kind of echo what Mark said simply, that our curriculum is based off state standards and is developed with that in mind. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Anthony?
Well, I know that the word indoctrination has been thrown around a lot with critical race theory. And so I want to take the opportunity to say that I don't believe indoctrination has any place in public schools. Like Mark said, the idea of public education is teaching students how to think, not what to think. And I'll say in addition, and also that indoctrination from any spectrum on the political wavelength. So whether it be liberal, conservative, indoctrination has no place in public schools, in my opinion. In the same breath, I will also say that I think it's imperative that as educators, we create a safe place, an inclusive place for educators and students to talk about complex issues. Because if we're not going to create that safe space and we're not going to be able to talk about complex issues, how are these students going to enter the world that's waiting for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Cory?
First off, I want to say that it's my belief the federal and the state government need to stay out of the business of creating curriculum. They set the standards and the local level, we decide what's curriculum that we need to use at, in our district to meet those standards. Now, with that said, I do not support any theory curriculum or anything out there that's going to teach our students to hate this great nation. I've served it for 22 years. I would never let it come in to destroy what I have served for and what I believe in. I also do not believe that we need to be serving any curriculum out there that causes a divide amongst our students based on color, race, religion, gender, anything like that. So I do not believe it has any place in the public school system, it has no place in America. We need to be unifying and uniting our students in our community and critical race theory is not the answer to that. So no, I do not support it and I will never support it.
Thank you, Cory. Paulette?
Well, as I hear that question, it's just so much in the media now and how each state and the states are maybe going to, you know, we're fearful, I think, of mandating things like that. I am totally against critical race theory. And as Cory said, all the division, all these new racial ideas and these new sexual identity ideas and everything at such a young age, I just feel children need to be children and we need to get back to just the basics of learning to read and with all the languages in the school, learning that. So I am totally against anything like that. And I'm going to bring up being a foster parent again. Over those years, that's not a question I asked. What color are they or where did they come from or what? That, you ask, is it a boy or a girl and what grade are they in, you know? And are they going to fit into my family? Well, if I have all boys in my house, I will, I did boys at that time. When I had my daughter in the house, then I could do little girls. So those are questions we ask. We don't ask all that other stuff. So I'm totally against that critical race theory.
Thank you, Paulette. So sticking on curriculum for a little bit, how would you improve STEM offerings and performance in the district? Kind of related to curriculum, I think.
Give me that one again.
How would you improve STEM offerings and performance in the district? And we start this one with Kate.
Okay. What's STEM?
Science, technology.
What's E stand for? I don't know that one.
Engineering.
Engineering.
Engineering?
Math.
Mathematics.
And mathematics.
Phew! Thanks for the help.
Top quiz.
Yeah.
Yeah, so STEM, you know, I, I think we've done a great job lately in expanding our STEM activities and programs. Just a few years ago in middle school, we expanded some, some encore classes to incorporate some STEM. And I, I know I've seen summer camps that we offer as well. So there are a lot of opportunities. I'm a great believer in it and I think that, again, it gives students a pathway. You know, it's not for all students, but for some that might be really their interest and what keeps them engaged and keeps them coming to school. So, I mean, I'm, I, I didn't catch quite all of the question. It was STEM offerings and what? Sorry, Betty.
Yeah, I buried it. There we go. Nope, that's not it.
How to improve?
How to improve? I think we just keep looking at, at, you know, what kind of programs we can bring into the school district at all age levels, elementary, middle and high school. You know, it's, it's if those kids are interested in it, then we can start them early and provide those opportunities for them.
Thank you, Kate. Anthony?
So STEM opportunities are something that we actually get to play a lot with at the, at the Education Foundation. So each year, this past year, we are currently paying out $108,000 in, in Public School Proud Grants. And so those are innovative grants within the classroom. I would say 50 to 60% of those end up being tied to STEM in some way. And so one of the ways that I've been able to do that over the past three years and would hope to continue to do that is through philanthropy and driving that, that leading edge education within the classroom through, through classroom grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Cory?
I'm not sure we actually do need to improve it, maybe build upon it and expand what we have. I think what we're offering right now is great and I wouldn't say anything needs to be improved in that aspect. Like Lowell Elementary is a coding school and they brought in a coding curriculum to start teaching some computer stuff for our students, to give them a little thing at the elementary age to see if they're, you know, into that technology. New Tech High is a great program that we've got and those different things there that we have that. So bringing in some more of these opportunities, maybe bringing in some more opportunities within Southeast Tech and offering that. But I want to say we need to improve it. I think that the district's done great on what we've got now. So just bringing in some more of the stuff in there to hit what our students are enjoy to do, you know? And if we do that, like Kate said earlier on how to improve attendance, if we bring in some more of it that they're actually interested in, that could help us on our improvement side too for the attendance rate. Let's just keep building on what we have instead of looking to improve what we have. Let's bring some more in.
All right. Thank you, Cory. Paulette?
And that's how I feel. I feel like Kate also said, it's not for all students. Each child is gifted in some area and I just believe not all of them are college material. But you find that, that they enjoy, that they love. It is just going to pull them into the school in all areas of the school. We've got these great tech schools. I got two grandsons who go up there, one in even like mechanics and the computer and one in, he keeps sending me pictures of welding lines. I'm like, ooh. But he's like in the top five of his class and just the excitement I see there and we need them. So I'm just encouraged by what I see with my children and grandchildren and how they're succeeding and dabbling and all the things they have to offer. Like Cory said, I don't know to improve them, but let's find what the children excel at.
Thank you, Paulette. Mark?
Anytime you can stimulate kids, it's a good program. I mean, that's, that's super. You know, once kids master the basic things and they have an opportunity to move on to other things, I, I can't see that there'd be a problem with it. I think if it's successful, we should expand it. But if you can stimulate kids, I'm all in.
All right. Thank you. All right. So our next question, and this one will start with Anthony. What does community engagement look like in the Sioux Falls School District?
Sure. So community engagement, it's one of my three planks in my platform, I believe is incredibly important. And I, I also feel that because of the pandemic and everything getting shut down, volunteers being locked out of schools, we've, we've really, we have some catch-up to do in terms of re-engaging the community, bringing parents, caregivers, community organizations back into the school district. And I, I think the- And I think that community engagement does two things. One, many hands make light work. So just having parents and organizations in the schools takes stress off of teachers and staff. Secondly, and that ends up being a retention issue or a retention opportunity for the school district. Secondly, that multi-generational, multi-adult interaction with the schoolchildren really prepares them for that pathway into the larger world. And so if you have students that are engaging with adults and different generations and different professions, that's just more exposure that children have that prepares them for the larger world. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory?
Community engagement's very near and dear to my heart, and part of it's the reason why I did get the master's degree, my area of concentration on that. And so to me, community engagement is that we get out there and we actually engage with the public. This is a public school, and so the school works for the public, for our community out there, for the parents. And so getting out there, listening to their concerns, working with them to come up with solutions on how to better operate our school district, and giving them the voice that they need on that where they feel an actual part of the school, so they can feel the success and, you know, if we make a wrong choice, they also feel part of the failure where it's not on the five board members, or the administration, IPC, that we all had a key play in that. So getting out there, listening to them, talking with them, engaging with them. One, I think that will help with the transparency then also, because now they're talking with the board, they're talking with IPC and all that, and they're feeling an actual part of the district that they help fund. So I think that's, to me, that's what community engagement is, is getting out and actually giving the community, our parents, a voice.
Thank you, Cory. Paulette?
Some of the things I remember and I would consider community engagement is when my grandkids or my own children were in elementary. They had all the big things to do. They had bingo, they had this, they had that, and they'd have little speakers there and you could ask questions, yet it was still a fun party. And the parents could get involved with the administration also. There was grandparents' day, there's science experience, just to get into the school. We got to get the parents involved to get into the school and actually look eye to eye at the teacher and just enjoy the environment and everything. And also like the booster club and sports, community, if we can get the community to go there and support events, and there's car washes. My son-in-law was the booster club president for many years at Roosevelt when his children were there. And just to, different ways to engage the community in those atmospheres always work well.
Thank you, Paulette. Mark?
You know, I told you how I felt about the transparency of the Sioux Falls Public Schools, and I believe that. Do we have to continue to expand conversations if we can? Yes. We want to get all the stakeholders here. Can we get grandparents, retired teachers, people who are interested in helping little kids read back in the school? I hope so. You know, we've had a year without those services. I think it's important that people spend time in the school, not only parents, but even board members if they can. And I don't know where we're at with that. I know in the past, we had board members in and sometimes we didn't. But I think it's important that board members can get out in the school, talk to the teachers, shake hands with a kid, and say, how's it going? I mean, it's, those are important things. But we need to have parents, community members, people involved in our district. I think like at CTE, all the investment that the business partners have done there is wonderful, and they've made that program, I think, very successful. So having people involved is important, and we have to stay transparent and keep people involved.
Thank you, Mark. Kate?
Well, I talked earlier about community engagement with the transparency question. So I'd like to also kind of expand on that and talk about our, talk about our community partners. I mean, I think that's how we get our communities engaged and our business partners engaged. You know, I think about all of our partnerships. Mark mentioned our business partners out at CTE, our partnerships with Avera, with Sanford. We're very lucky to have, you know, those two large health systems engaged with the school district in different programs. I think about Thrive and Promising Futures, and even the Education Foundation, and all that they do for our schools, bringing in, whether it's through grants or whether it's through funds that are raised to provide vending machines with books. You know, those are just really wonderful partnerships that we have, and I believe that we've got a very strong community engagement because of those business partners that we have here in Sioux Falls. We're very lucky indeed, because not all school districts have that.
Thank you, Kate. All right, we will move on to a new question. This one we'll start with Cory. Should homeschool kids be allowed in school sports?
My thought is yes, that they should be. And I look back and think of Tim Tebow. You know, if homeschool kids were not allowed in sports, we would not know who Tim Tebow was because he was a homeschool kid who was involved in sports. So, and the homeschool families, they pay taxes just like the public school kids pay taxes, and just like O'Gorman in our private school paid taxes. So they're paying the taxes, they should get the benefit of the public school. So yes, I do believe that we should continue to allow them to play sports.
Thank you, Cory. Paulette?
Yes, I also think they should continue that. I do have some, three of my grandchildren are homeschooled. They did go to Christian Center Elementary till that closed. Their mother, my daughter-in-law, is a school teacher. She teaches them at home, but yet we see one is gifted in art. So my granddaughter does take an art class in the public school system, and my other grandson takes a class at one of the schools, and next year he will be going to Lincoln High School. They enrolled him there now that he's in high school. So they just saw what was good and what their child needed and utilized the school for them.
Thank you. Mark?
Well, it's kind of a moot point. It's already passed the legislature, it was going to happen. Now, if you want my opinion, I can give you an opinion on that. I believe that we have to make sure that rules are fair for both kids that are enrolled in public school and kids that are homeschooled. It, there's a lot of rules and activities in the public school system that can hinder our, whatever you, so, but no, I, it's a moot point. I guess I shouldn't even, whatever. It's going to happen, and it's, and we'll have to deal with it, and that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Mark. Kate?
I think that, again, it is a moot point at this point. We will have to follow the state legislature and what they passed this last year. And I do worry about those students that may not have the same policies that they have to follow, like Sioux Falls School District students have to follow. I mean, attendance, grades, things of that nature. So making sure that there's a level playing field for all students, I think, is what we need to focus on, and, you know, making sure that every kid follows the same rules that wants to participate in an activity.
Thank you, Kate Anthony.
So I would say yes, that homeschool kids should be able to play in school sports because they, the families pay the taxes. However, like Cory said earlier, with great, with freedom, with great freedom comes great responsibility. And so I would say that, to Kate's point, if you're going to have the freedom to play in the sports in public schools, then you also have to have the responsibility, the same responsibility. So my thought about that is absolutely, the more the merrier. But as long as we're all following the same rules, because my fear in that situation is actually it incentivizes students who are gifted, say, at sports, but maybe not meeting the academics, to drop out of school. And so that would have a negative effect on attendance, which we already talked about. So that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. All right, so I've got a couple of questions that have come in, kind of around nutrition and health. And so the questions, this time we will start our responses with Paulette. So chronic disease and nutrition are linked, and many students obviously receive their meals at school. With COVID, I think we became even more aware of this impact of dependency on the schools for nutrition and the relationship between nutrition and health. So would you support improving school nutrition in the district?
Well, supporting the nutrition, I know the waste in the schools that I see is just terrible. On the school buses, we've got baskets and baskets of food that they throw in there, that we bring into the bus garage and we take home. Canned food, boxes of food, and that's kind of separate, that maybe is another program, but just the waste we see right on our school buses. The nutrition part, I just think, I know people talk to me a lot and want the, when I told them I was running, get new food in the school system. So good or bad, look at your menu. If it's not good, pack a lunch and go in. But I think they can go either, either way. Look at the menu, what's going to be served, either pack a lunch or eat what's there. But as far as making it better, of course, I hear from parents a lot and people how the food is not good there. But I don't know that for a fact, so I'm not going to comment on that.
Thank you. Mark?
I've had some experience with school lunch. And I think by and large, they try to serve nutritious and healthful food to kids. I don't think they should sell sugar candy bars. It's important that kids have a place where they can get, because their kids probably are not getting the most nutritious food. And I think that's very important that we help those kids. I know a lot of people think, oh, you know, whatever. But you know what? Kids need healthy diets to learn. Kid needs food in their stomachs so they feel well in school. And for a lot of kids, that's where they get a balanced diet and nutritious meal, and I'm all for that.
Thank you, Mark. Kate?
Well, I know our school lunches are nutrition, are nutritious. They follow federal guidelines. And, you know, the comments that was made about bring your own lunch, we have such a large population of students that are on free and reduced lunch, that's not an option for them to just bring a lunch if they don't like what's on the menu. So we have to take that into consideration. You know, I've got two boys, and they are wildly different. One packs a lunch every day, has done so since kindergarten. My other has eaten school lunch every day and has never packed a lunch. So I have one that doesn't like it and one that does. So it's all, it's all, you just don't know by kid what they're going to like or dislike. I know that we've had kids on tasting committees, so the kids are involved in, in, you know, new food options. So I don't know that we need to improve nutrition. Like I said, we follow the guidelines and the federal regulations that were required to. You know, when you're feeding, you know, almost 25,000 students and staff on top of that every single day and in our summers, I think we do a pretty darn good job at it.
Thank you, Kate Anthony.
So I would, I would say that school lunch and also school breakfast is closely tied with the student equity piece that I mentioned earlier. For a lot of families, your, the school system is their destination for a nutritious meal. And so I support that wholeheartedly in terms of making sure that food is available through the school district. As far as improving it, I think to Kate's point, we have nutritional specialists that work for the district. You know, could we make it gourmet? Sure. But I don't know that the taxpayers are up for that. So, so I guess we could have a larger discussion about that, but I think what we serve now gets the job done.
Thank you, Anthony. Cory?
There's a reason why we have such an obesity issue in America today, and it's because non-nutritious items cost a lot less than nutritional items. You can go to any store and look at a gallon of water and price that to a two-liter of Coke. The two-liter is going to cost less than the gallon of water out there. So the nutrition side is going to cost money. And I don't believe that we need to make our meals more nutrition. Like Kate said, we follow the federal guidelines, so I think that they are, we're meeting all that part. The problem is, we need to make them so that the kids like to eat them. Just looking at my family in particular, with my daughter moving into middle school this year, she eats school lunch every day this year. For the past five years, she brought her lunch, except for maybe if there's chicken nuggets, and I don't know if you can go wrong with chicken nuggets. But in my son, he won't eat the elementary lunch. And just being in there and looking at that, the elementary kids don't like it. And so it's not happening to make it gourmet, but let's figure out a way that actually makes it taste and look appealing to the students, you know? Sight has a big thing, and if they just slop something on there, it could be the greatest eating, tasting thing out there, but the kids aren't even going to try it. So we've got to look into that area. I think we're hitting the nutritional guidelines. We just need to make it so the kids will actually eat it.
Thank you, Cory. All right, I think we're going to work in at least one more question, maybe two. And so this time, we're going to start with Mark. And the question is, what would you like to be the most involved with as a school board member? And if you could, what would you change or what change would you bring as a school board member?
You know, in the multifaceted interests of school board members, that's a tough question. I would like to be improving reading levels, math levels, wherever we're behind, those things. I'd like to be involved with trying to help find people to mentor kids. I know they're experimenting with new reading programs, and I think it's going to be pretty good. It's called the SIFs program, and it's all about phonics and sight words. Those are the kind of things that incite me as a school board member. When I was teaching high school, those weren't the kind of things that incited me, but this really does. I really feel a mission to really increase reading scores and the ability of kids to have books. I know Promising Futures is working with kids being able to have their own books, books they can take home. And I think that's huge. Reading supports the curriculum. It's the most important thing for K through three, that's where the reading's got to happen, and it supports the entire curriculum. So that's a passion for me, and I'd really like to work in that area.
Thank you, Mark. Kate?
You know, for me, it's, you know, the five, last five years, we've been working through strategic plan. And if I were re-elected, I think the one thing that I'm really looking forward to is looking at that and really seeing what our district priorities should be in the next five, 10 years. Like I said earlier, I think this is an exciting time to be in the Sioux Falls School District. We have so many offerings for our students and provide so many opportunities for them to learn and be engaged. And I think this is just an opportunity for us to look back at those, that strategic plan that we had in place, revamp it, put some renewed focus on certain areas. And I think, like I said, it's an exciting time for us right now. I think we can, as I said earlier, I think we can be the best school district in the nation. We've got great teachers and staff, and our students are engaged in learning, and I just, I look forward to doing that.
Thank you, Kate. Anthony?
Yeah, so I would also love to get involved with the strategic plan and help guide the future of where the school district is headed. In addition to that, one of the things that is kind of at the, at my heart is equitable access and the expansion of specialty programs. And what I, we've had incredible success through Spanish immersion, All City Elementary, the Challenge Center, you know, all these specialty programs. But as our, as the equity in the school district starts to separate, access to those specialty programs becomes harder for lower-income families. And so one of the things that I would like to get involved with personally is finding ways to expand access and the size of specialty programs based on their incredible success.
Thank you. Cory?
Well, I wish Mark didn't say reading. Well, I wish Mark didn't say reading, so I could come up with something new and improved that you hadn't heard yet. But, so I'm not gonna talk that. But I don't know if anybody watched the board on Monday. But we had the teacher's salary schedule came out. And we're, we're trying to compete now with districts around us because our starting salary is so much lower. So my first thought was, that's just sad. And then I started thinking, no, that is embarrassing. We're the largest school district in the state. Part of our thing is to be the best in the nation. Well, 60% of our teachers have a master's degree or higher. They're professionals, yet we're not paying them like professionals. So with that, you know, and we're only looking at year one through four. Well, recruiting is a big thing, but retention's even bigger. And recruiting and retention go hand in hand. So the top of the pay scale, they don't see anything. Yet that's where a lot of our teachers sit. Our legislation, they did their part and they funded the schools. But we're not doing our part in funding our teachers. Our teachers are our backbone. We've gotta pay them that way. You know, I don't know how many of you are out there, but 10 years to negotiate your salary? And that's what we're telling our teachers. They're the ones with our children, day in and day out, until they come home to see their parents. So we need to pay them like professionals. We need to look at, just because we have this agreement, doesn't mean we can't negotiate earlier. We should be negotiating earlier, and we should be caring about those ones that went out and got their master's degree to educate our children.
Thank you, Cory. Paulette?
I, for my involvement is always hands-on. That's what I like to do. I still believe the parent involvement is something, that's just the top of my list. I look at All-City School, and that's a great schoolness and that. Why? Teachers are, or parents are all involved. They have to be there. They have to take their turn. They, so anything you put your time into and your energy into, you're gonna go up. The homeschooler grades are up. The, so that's, that's where my heart is. Like, how can we get the public school, the parents in there? So that is really, I just got a lot of ideas, just hands-on. I mean, I'm not afraid to go into a classroom. I'm on a school bus with kids. I would love for one parent to ride a week. Okay, you got 30 kids in the class, I can have one parent on my bus a day. We need help on the bus. The teachers need help in their classroom with discipline. We can do that. The buses are literally out of control. The poor teachers, their salary and everything. We're calling them to come out and meet the bus to start disciplining. Last week, we had teachers riding the bus with us to help discipline. So I just think more parents and involvement would help that situation.
Thank you, Paulette. Well, we've got several questions that we're not gonna get to. So, well, our candidates collect their thoughts about their closing statements. I'm gonna read through these questions just so everyone knows what else was asked. So how many different schools have you been in over the last 10 years? What will your key focus be while you are on the school board? How would you propose helping kids sort through misinformation or propaganda in the media or social media? Should there be a curriculum? How would you want the board to select curriculum for the school? Do you have experience in writing and reviewing policy? Should honors programs reward IQ test scores or student diligence? And a follow-up question, kind of related to the, the health question. The American Heart Association recommends more, no more than 25 grams of added sugar a day. One USDA-approved meal can contain over 80 grams of added sugar. If that's true, would you fix it? So those are the questions we didn't have time to get to. So we are going to move on now to our closing statements. Two minutes for each candidate. And we're gonna do reverse order from our opening statements. So we start with Anthony.
All right. Well, I would just say thank you again to all of you, everybody who tuned in tonight, to the chamber and to the League of Women Voters. Betty did a great job. Thank you. And we've covered a lot of ground tonight and a lot of topics. And I want to leave you with four thoughts as you go about your evening tonight. First, the thing that I appreciate about the school board over any political office that you can run for is that we all have something in common, and that is the kids in our, our community. It's the one thing that binds us that no other political office has. Second, something I hope you've learned about me and will remember about me is that I've built a life and a career around bringing people together to find win-win, mutually beneficial solutions. And that would be something that I hope to bring to the school board. Third, another thing that I appreciate is our values as South Dakotans. In my view, South Dakotans are thoughtful and kind. We look to help each other out. We're hardworking and we get things done. Lastly, I'm asking for your vote tonight. If elected, I'll bring these South Dakota values to our teachers and, to the school board to benefit our teachers and staff, our community, and most importantly, our children. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Anthony. Kate?
Yeah, I'm gonna be pretty short and sweet here. You know, just, I said a lot in my opening statement. Just appreciate everyone again being here and asking questions. You know, I, like I said, I've been on the board for 12 years and I still love what I do. I still am learning something new every day that I didn't know yesterday, either with my own kids in school or with my work on the school board. And I, I still have a great interest and passion for, for what I do. You know, I've had different experiences with both my boys and different schools. And I think that my biggest takeaway from all of this is that I want to make sure that all of our kids have access to the same great programs that they would have at any other school. I think it's our job to, to make sure that, that our kids really feel like they belong somewhere and that they have the opportunities to be engaged and to learn and to be excited to go to school every day through, you know, whether that's through classes or activities, sports, what have you. So I believe in our kids. I think they've got so much potential. And I think we have a lot to offer them here in Sioux Falls. So I too would ask for your vote next Tuesday, or if you vote early here at IPC. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Mark?
To begin with, I want to say how proud I am of Sioux Falls Public Schools. I worked here for 32 years. We have great teachers, great administrators. We have great community support. We have wonderful support staff. People in education are dedicated to kids, and that's the way it should be. Election's not really about us. It's about them. It's not us. It's them. It's the kids. That's what we're about. And that's what I love about education. All students deserve our best effort. And I think it's important that the children of Sioux Falls School District are provided with quality education. My children received an excellent education in Sioux Falls School District. I wish I'd have taken advantage of it when I was in here then. But anyway, I had a great education too, and a great experience in the Sioux Falls School District. I want for my grandchildren and for all children to have a quality, equal, equal opportunities in the Sioux Falls Public Schools. They all deserve an education that provides them each and every one with an opportunity to select a path in which they choose to be successful. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity this evening. It was fun. And allowing me to present my views, that was fun too. This election's about trying to do what's best for kids as a board member. I hope you vote for me, and my goal will be, just like I said on my sign, I want to place students first. And I mean it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Paulette?
Oh, well, I, as a mother and a grandmother in Sioux Falls here, I love the city of Sioux Falls. And as I said earlier, my children graduated here with honors. My grandchildren graduated with honors. And with what they went through, the foster children I had, I just love the school system with the teacher involvement. And I get in there and they helped even work through the death of my daughter with my grandkids. You know, not celebrating Mother's Day. I thought they should cancel that in the school. You know, I was angry. I went, and they worked through it with me also. And we learned to, you know, do different things. So I've always loved the Sioux Falls Public School System, and it's done great. And my job, I believe, in this school system is to just keep an eye on things, keep the kids growing, happy, healthy, get the parents involved. And let's get a little bit of discipline back in to the areas that need that and just all work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Paulette. Cory?
First off, Betty, thanks for being the moderator for this. And thanks, everybody, for coming out. I had a lot of fun here. More importantly, I'd like to thank Anthony, Kate, Mark, and Paulette too for this. I think a great board. I think we probably could show the nation of how to have a forum with a bunch of candidates that might have different views and not jump at each other's throats. So thank you, guys. I had a lot of fun listening to you guys and learning from you that way too. So one of the questions I was posed that we didn't get was policy. So I'd like to touch, I guess, on that a little bit in my closing remarks. Part of the function of the school board, and maybe one of the main ones, is writing the policy for the school and how the school's going. And so I think we do need people on the board that understand how to write policy, review policy, look at it from a legal review. So when I started out in the military as a paralegal, and I was in the administrative law branch, and there I had to review policies on that. So I learned it from the legal side. Now, the last 12 years of my 22 years, I've been spent on a staff level where I've written policy. I've reviewed policy. I was selected twice from the state of South Dakota to go out to Washington, DC to work with National Guard Bureau and the Department of the Army on two different things, to write policies, not just for our state or for the unit I was in or anything like that, but for the nation as a whole. So I've got the experience of writing policy, reviewing policy, looking at policy from a legal view on that. I've got, one of my college degrees, I have three of them, is in legal studies. So I understand the law. So doing that and looking at that is that way. So those signs are freaking me out. Seeing stuff jump at me. So, but I guess I'll just echo what everybody else did and be the fifth person to go ahead and ask for one of your two votes this, between now and next Tuesday. And I think all of us can agree that we all are here because we do love the school district and we love the children. We just might go a different route of doing it. So thank you again for coming.
Thank you, Cory. Well, this does conclude tonight's school board candidate forum. We do appreciate everyone that has come to attend in person tonight, as well as those who have watched from home. Also, our thanks to, to you as candidates. It takes a great deal of courage and commitment to step forward and put yourself on the line to, to, to your community, ask for their support to serve on this board. So I think you all deserve a round of applause. So. The right to vote is such an essential part of our democracy. And we truly do encourage everyone to exercise this right to vote, whether that is through early vote or through coming out on May 18th and casting your vote on that day. On behalf of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters, I thank you all and have a wonderful evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Betty.